We're ready, Jonathan?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening and welcome to the Planning Commission of San Clemente. Today is Wednesday, April 19th, and I call this meeting to order. And our new city attorney, Elizabeth Mitchell, will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
Hand over your heart and follow me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we please have roll call?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Crandall is absent. Commissioner Davis is absent. Commissioner McCacken?
Here.
Commissioner Prescott Lefler is absent. Chair Protam Camp?
Here.
Vice Chair Cosgrove?
Here.
And Chairman McCann?
Here. Thank you. We have no special orders of business?
Chair, if I may, I am going to recommend one modification to the agenda this evening, and that would be that the commission consider hearing item 9A after item 8A, and then proceed on to item 8B after that.
Okay, that's acceptable with me. Do we need to take a little vote on that? Okay. All in favor of changing the agenda's itemization as recommended by Jonathan?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay.
Great, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Item five, the minutes. Do we have a motion or any changes?
Would you approve? Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item passes for zero. Oral and written communications. Is there anyone here in the audience that wishes to speak on anything that is not on the agenda tonight? Okay, great. Consent calendar, no consent calendar. Public hearings. Item 8A. Conditional use permit 22-255 Sancho's Tacos Full Alcohol, 1101 South El Camino Real. Do we have a staff report?
Can you please open the public hearing before the staff report?
Sure. I open the public hearing.
Fellow commissioners, my name is Laura Corey. I'm Assistant Planner in the Planning Division. I represent a conditional use permit 22255 Sancho's Tacos Full Alcohol Permit.
Can you turn on your lights?
Sancho's Tacos is requesting a CUP to allow a full range alcohol service for indoor and outdoor onsite consumption, an ABC type license 4.7 with eight indoor seats and 35 outdoor seats between the hours of 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. daily. The applicant intends to complement its Mexican-themed food menu with margaritas and other spirits to accompany their meals, and the owner is processing applications with both the city and the alcohol beverage control to obtain the necessary approvals. Currently, the restaurant holds a Type 41 license to serve beer and wine, and it was originally approved under MCUP 17061. The project is located in (laugh) the neighborhood Commercial Two zoning district, an architectural overlay and affordable housing overlay. It consists of a 1,200 square foot, single-story, single-tenant commercial building with an outdoor patio and 10 parking spaces. Surrounding land uses include commercial uses, retail shops and restaurants to the north, south, and west, and the eastern property line (laugh) sorry, butts the 5 freeway off-ramp, the El Camino off-ramp, and Interstate 5 highway. We don't have our video up, but (pause) let's see. It's consistent with the zone, the neighborhood commercial zone, in accommodating local service uses with outdoor dining. And the proposed full alcohol service expands and complements the restaurant's menu. So, the project adjoins also South El Camino Real, West Avenida Santiago, and the I-5 freeway. The setting mitigates potential noise impacts. The building is located on South El Camino Real, west of the 5 freeway, and is approximately 100 feet from the nearest residential zone. The outdoor patio is well buffered from residential, and the request does not involve indoor or outdoor live entertainment or amplified sound, and the restaurant will provide alcohol services both indoor and outdoor. And the outdoor patio surrounding is surrounded by compatible uses such as retail shops and other restaurants, and adjoins South El Camino Real, West Avenida Santiago, and the I-5. Now, it's coming on. So, one of the slides shows that the hours are consistent with local restaurants in the area, and is consistent with the times. We have a site plan and a seating plan that we show. Staff recommends that the planning commission determine that the project is categorically exempt from the requirements of SEQA and to the SEQA guidelines, section 15301, Class 1 Existing Facilities, and adopt resolution PC 23007 approving the conditional use permit 22-255 Sanchez Tacos Full Alcohol Service, subject to the attached conditions of approval. Just a note, there were some clerical errors. In the staff report, in the subject line, there was a reference to a type 20 license, and that's been changed to ABC type 41, which is existing. And then in the resolution, all references in the resolution should reference onsite consumption, not off-site. Are there any questions?
I have a question. So, the fence that defines that outdoor seating, it looks like it's this lower, maybe a four-foot high fence? Because in the photo, in the middle there, I'm looking, it appears that the fence is at the property line, the chain link. It looks like it's falling over. I don't know if that's current.
Um, I believe that's on the property line for Biggie's Burgers. That's their fence.
Okay. So, it's all contained on their side?
They currently have a wrought iron fence that encloses the outdoor patio area, and then per ABC requirements, they'll retrofit the openings to make sure that they're within four feet. And ABC only requires them to put a plant, or permanent, or plants in the way to make it sure that they narrow the openings to four feet.
Okay. And I'm a little confused about the number of outdoor seats. On the first page, it says more than 16, and then on page two, it says 35 outdoor and eight indoor.
That references how the zoning code allows parking for different types of seating. So, if it's under a certain number, you're allowed so many parking spaces, and that's why the reference for the 16 is there. It references, they are minus eight parking spaces as kind of, I don't know what you want to call it, like...
I guess this doesn't really affect the request.
No.
But it also says under parking that there's 11 indoor seats and 29 outdoor seats.
That was previous, under the minor conditional use permit, and so then the applicant has changed, did a minor change in recent years, and put more outdoor seating, and so less indoor seating.
And then this one says current seats 43. I guess that's including the inside.
Yes, yes, sir.
And I counted 32, so I got like four different.[945.12][945.12](laugh) I'm just curious what it actually is. Is it going to be the 35 and eight?
So, it's eight indoor and then the 35.
35 outdoor.
Outdoor.
Okay. Yeah, those are the only questions I had.
Cameron?
Sure. Just along the same lines, is the 35 outdoor seats just a reconfiguration of the existing space? There's no expansion of the outdoor. It's just reshuffling the chairs to get 35 instead of the previous 28.
Yes. Previously, the seating arrangements were different. They were like patio picnic tables. Thank you, I couldn't think of the word. Picnic tables. And so now, there is a reconfiguration of the seating to allow for the 35.
Okay. And is the scope of this CUP strictly the 47 license, or is there anything else in there?
It's for the ABC license.
Only?
Yes.
So, are they doing a remodel as part of this? Or is it just a moving around of stuff?
It's just changing, yeah, the seating arrangement.
Okay. Not a remodel?
Not a remodel.
Not an expansion?
Not an expansion.
And they meet the parking?
They meet the parking.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
One more question.
Go ahead.
Sorry about that. So, the umbrellas that are shown here, at least on the middle photo, those are going to remain. And then it looks like there's light fixtures on either side. Are those new, or are those already part of the existing approval?
Those are heat lamps. Those are heat lamps.
Oh, so there's no lighting?
No, no lighting. The umbrellas are on the patio, but there's, those are heat lamps.
Are there any wall packs on the building? Because it's open until 10:00, right? How do they light that space?
I don't see any light. I don't see any light either. Yes?
I'm sure the applicant can answer that when we're doing public comments.
Okay. Call for me.
Okay. Dr. McCacken, do you have any comments?
No questions.
I have a couple. 8:00 AM, is it, are there any issues with allowing alcohol at 8:00 AM?
I'm sorry, say again?
Are there any issues with allowing alcohol starting at 8:00 AM?
We have not had any complaints.
Okay.
Or any remarks. And originally, the hours were from 8:00 to 10:00 with the beer and wine license.
So, they do have an existing beer and wine license. This is just a...
Type 41.
Okay. Thank you. I have no further questions. So, with that, we will, as the public hearing is already open, we will have speakers. You have three minutes, I'll call your name, three minutes to share what you'd like.
What's the applicant, right, in the day of 10?
They have, does the applicant have five or 10?
The applicant's entitled to 10 minutes.
Okay. Sorry. So, if you're the applicant, you have 10 minutes. Let us know if you're the applicant. There's a red, yellow, and green light here. When the light, yellow light goes off, you have one minute left in your time. So, and I will cut you off. So, with that, do you guys have a preference as to who goes first? I have two speaker cards. Okay. Valerie?
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Sure.
It would be appropriate to have the applicant speak first, and then have public comment, and then have the applicant have a rebuttal.
Okay. I think they're both the applicant, but that sounds great.
Okay.
So, the applicant, or if you're both the applicant, either one, first. Valerie, is that your name?
Valerie Sax. I apologize for my dreadful handwriting.
You should have been a doctor.[1228.51][1228.51](laugh)
If I could only do math, right?
Thank you, Valerie.
Yeah.
You have 10 minutes.
So, I won't need 10 minutes. I think this is a pretty straightforward request, but I also wanted to say, Donnie Lancaster is here as well. He's available to answer any questions you might have about the use, his intentions for it, you know, some of these specifics that you guys asked about the physical improvements. You know, he informed me that lights are actually attached to the buildings, so that's how they will not be sitting in the dark at 9:00 o'clock at night. But I'll leave those for him if you guys have any questions. Otherwise, I think not everybody enjoys getting up in front of a bunch of people and speaking. So, he'll do it if he needs to. Otherwise, I'll try to go over the request. So, anyway, thank you so much, Laura, for all of your hard work. Really appreciate staff's work and communication throughout this process in order to resolve a few of the little discrepancies, because this was kind of carried over from a few... This is, originally, there was another restaurant that was open at this location. Donnie opened Sanchez Tacos at this location in 2017 and got a CUP at that time to be able to serve beer and wine. And then, you know, there have just been minor adjustments each time as things have come up. And so, I know that Laura worked out a lot of those kind of details having to do with the parking, and credit for previous, you know, the previous uses and things like that with Donnie. So, I'm glad that they were all able to resolve all that. Anyway, basically, the purpose of this is just, this is just, Donnie is, oh, sorry. Let me start over with that. So, basically, Donnie Lancaster, years ago, for years now, he's always loved to entertain and loved to cook for families and friends, and it just seemed to get bigger and bigger, and then he finally decided to open up a restaurant. So, in 2010, he opened up his first Sanchez Tacos in Huntington Beach, and since then, he opened up one in Newport Beach in 2013, Laguna Niguel in 2018, Oceanside 2019, Bakersfield in 2020. Actually, San Clemente was 2017. And then he has a new one that's going to be opening up shortly in Clermont. Most of those, six of those locations, serve alcohol. Most of them are type 41, which is beer and wine at a restaurant. And Oceanside is a type 47. Clermont will be a type 47, and we are asking for San Clemente to be upgraded from a type 41 to a type 47. So, a type 47 is beer and wine at a restaurant. So, it's not a bar, and, you know, you have to be eating, and you look confused, Laura. So, alcohol service at a restaurant. And basically, it's a locally owned and operated place. He's a very hands-on proprietor. He really wants it. It's been a very welcoming establishment, a local kind of place, and he just wants to keep that, carrying that on. But the ability to upgrade the license type to a 47 is just, is something that's important for the long-term viability of the restaurant. It just helps, you know, it helps economically. So, that's basically the idea. Right now, he has, he serves beer and wine. He has some local beers that he serves, artifacts, I guess, is a local beer that he has on tap, and some wine, and he's going to have a menu of maybe eight cocktails. For those of you who have seen the location or are familiar with it, it's pretty small. It's not like there's ever going to be a full bar there or anything, but he just wants to be able to offer those to his patrons and have a few, you know, margarita, mojito, rum and coke, and a few just kind of, you know, muddled drinks. What is it called? Muddled? Yes, muddled drinks that are freshly made onsite for his patrons to enjoy. So, you know, that's about it. We've reviewed all the conditions of approval. They look very viable. He takes security very seriously, absolutely doesn't want to have any problems, and has had no problems at any of his locations. So, he's a very responsible and reliable operator. Also, he's local, so, you know, it's very important for him as a community member to have an establishment that's a positive, you know, nice, nice, positive community gathering place for his patrons, doesn't want to attract any kind of problem patrons. The 10:00 PM cutoff, I think, is indicative of it being a fairly modest-type operation in terms of the intensity of the use. And I think that's basically all I have to say, unless you guys have any questions about it.
Anyone have any questions for Valerie? No? Okay. Thank you so much. Donnie, would you like to speak? I have a speaker card from you as well.
Yeah, I'll be short.
Donnie Lancaster.
I should have done the Toastmaster thing. This is my biggest nightmare.
If you could, if you could please address, how is that front patio lit?
The front patio, if you drive by, it has some awnings that go over, and under the awnings, it's all fluorescent. So, it's, each ballast has two bulbs, so there's two, four, six, eight. So, it lights pretty good and cascades off the bottom of the awning and gives a nice mood light. And then we have fixed lights that go around the top of the wrought iron that just kind of light it up a little bit. And then, I don't know if the current two umbrellas are, but they did illuminate, they had a little solar thing on top, so at night, you'd flick it, and it'd just give a nice ambiance. But yeah, it's lit pretty well. If you drive by, you can, and if you're dining there, you can see what you're eating. So, that's important. Yeah, so we just wanted, as a matter of convenience, we love it here, love San Clemente. We were just going to live here for a year and go back to Huntington, and the people here were so kind that we've purchased a couple of homes here, and we love it. And I wouldn't want to live anywhere else, so I love the people here, and that's basically, I love what I do. We've won best taco, I think, for the last three or so years. We always do the Taste of San Clemente. The city had held a taco contest on the pier, one and only, and we won first place in People's Choice. So, we take it very seriously, and there's a lot of pride in our food and everything we do.
Great. Thank you so much. Any questions for Donnie? Well, you run a very popular establishment. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate everyone's time. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I may, there was one thing I did forget to mention when I...
Sure.
Basically, you had some questions about the patio barrier. And so, she described, Laura described the barrier a bit, but also, it's up. It's up, it's elevated above the street. So, it's, you know, the property slants down a little bit, and the patio is up that way. So, it's just an additional, it's, in addition to the four-foot barrier, it's already up quite a bit. So, it's not like, I don't know, you could hand something over, not that they would ever allow that anyway. But if that's, you know, I understand the barriers are a potential concern.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. Commission discussion?
Do you typically close the public hearing and then keep it?
What we've historically done is we listen to the staff report, not in public hearing, and then right before public comments, we open the public hearing, and then right after public comments, we close the public hearing. But we're at your discretion.
My suggestion would be to close the public hearing at this time.
Okay.
Before commission discussion.
Thank you. I close the public hearing. Commission discussion. Anybody have any comments or things they want to talk about? I will. I agree with the findings found in the resolution, and I think that this is a great and popular establishment, and I find their request reasonable for the zone and the location, and I will be in support of the project. So, with that, I'm open to a motion, or if not, I'll make one myself.
I'll make a motion that we determine the project is categorically exempt from the requirements of the SEQA, concerned to SEQA guidelines, section 15301, which is Class 1 Existing Facilities, and that we adopt resolution PC 23-007. I like that, 007. Approving conditional use permit 22-255 Sanchez Tacos Alcohol Service, subject to the attached conditions of approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Motion cap passes four, zero. Thank you for serving our community.
Thank you.
Moving on, based on the... Moving on, based on the rearrangement we voted on, we'll be jumping to Item 9A.
Chair, just sorry to interrupt, I'd just like to note for the record that there's a 10-day appeal period. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And Chair, I'm going to recommend one quick change in, in our seating positions. We learned after the meeting started that the computer that can project is the chair that the secretary is sitting at, that changed from our last meeting, so to accommodate the ability to share the screen moving forward, we're going to make a quick change.
Okay.
Thank you, Laura.
Jonathan, are we ready to resume?
I don't have a presentation yet, the computer's still loading.
Whatever you like, if you want us to wait, we're happy to wait.
We can begin, and I'll pull up the PowerPoint when the computer loads.
Okay, I noticed the item. We're now going to begin New Business 9A, General Plan Strategic Implementation Program. Do we have a staff report?
Okay, good evening, planning commissioners. The item before you tonight is a request from the Planning Commission to recommend to the City Council an update to the General Plan Strategic Implementation Program. We do have a PowerPoint presentation. Okay, so the Strategic Implementation Program is an annual operation, the city completes in tandem with the annual budget review. The SIP is essentially an exercise that ensures each department, division's projects or tasks, which we call the implementation measures in the SIP, that they are adequately evolving and changing with the needs and circumstances with the community, and essentially solidifying or recording our commitment to the city's long-term vision in the general plan. And we do this by reviewing the status of past priorities, which also, we do it while determining future priorities for the coming year based on our available resources. Additionally, the annual update to the SIP allows us to reevaluate the level of priority for each implementation measure, and which lead department will be responsible for executing each of the implementation measures. I don't know what's going on with the PowerPoint, so, okay, so, once the Planning Commission has had a chance to review the staff's changes to the implementation measures, the Planning Commission's feedback is sent to the City Council, which will be reviewed within the coming months alongside a budget workshop. Here we go, okay, so this slide is a summary of the current status of the SIP, this is the same table provided in the staff report, it tallies the total number of both ongoing and one-time implementation measures. To reiterate the information in the staff report, a one-time implementation measure, are projects with a definitive endpoint and can eventually be marked as completed, they are separated by priority level, low, medium, and high, and then we have ongoing implementation measures, which are in their own category. Ongoing implementation measures are projects conducted throughout the year on a consistent basis and will remain in effect, pursued by whichever department or division handles the task. I don't know what's going on with this, okay. So, we have a total of 212 implementation measures to report on, 158 of those which are ongoing throughout the year. In fiscal year 2023, the city completed nine implementation measures and have currently started work on 100% of the implementation measures marked as high priority. For a bigger picture of all the implementation measures, the staff report provides attachments of the proposed changes to last year's SIP and those implementation measures that, which were completed. The implementation measures is quite an extensive list, so rather than going through each one individually, if any commissioners have questions about one in particular or numerous implementation measures, we can discuss those specific projects in more detail. I do want, I don't, okay, so, tonight for this item, staff is asking the Planning Commission to make a determination on two recommended actions, the first being for the Commission to determine a review of the project has been completed according to the California Environmental Quality Act, and the second is to adopt Resolution PC 23-005, recommending approval of this next fiscal year implementation plan. I am not aware of any public comments on the item. This does conclude staff's presentation, happy to answer any questions.
Does anybody have any questions? Do we need to open the public hearing?
This is not a-
Not a hearing.
This is not a public hearing item.
Okay, thank you. Cameron?
Yeah, hi Kyle.
Hi.
SB 167, Housing Accountability Act. We're going to be working on that, right? Is that in this somewhere?
167.
Yep, Housing Accountability Act.
Let's pull up.
It's calling for objective design standards that are published publicly, and the idea is that the state of California is very, has to, is suggesting that with a law, that we adopt, all cities adopt that, objective design standard, publish it, so that applicants know what's expected, and a number of cities are working on it, I'm assuming we're working on it, it would be part of our housing element, so I'm wondering, is that in here? Does that need to be in here?
Yeah, within the housing element, there's the Housing Action Program, right, that has certain, or Housing Action Plan that has certain programs within it, and so Program 2A, 2B, and 5 address housing and specifically calls out objective design standards, more so for affordability, and so what the Planning Division is doing right now, we're looking at objective design standards that go in line with our housing rezoning project, and so, is it addressing the, the state bill that you, you called out? I cannot say for certain, but we are looking at objective design standards that, if it's not addressing that exact bill, we would be able to use that as a stepping stone to address that. If it is in our housing element, the, the bill you called out.
I'm ju- you know what I'm talking about, Jonathan?
I'm not familiar with that exact bill, but I am familiar with our ongoing work regarding that area.
Okay, so, you know, at the California League of Cities and the Planning Commission Workshop that they held, that Commissioner Crandall and I attended, this was a huge topic, the Housing Accountability Act. It's a mandate from the state legislature for all municipalities to create and publish objective building standards, and the state's objective, as I understand it, is that, once these are, standards are established, they become a, a matter of, of, for the, an applicant who wishes to pull a building permit, to be able to find those on the website, and then submit their application, and if it meets those objectives, building permit standards, that they would then be issued a stand, a permit, like almost a guaranteed issue, if they meet those standards. And the state of California has expressly passed this, this law because they want to streamline the construction of new projects, specifically housing projects, and they've declared a housing shortage, and they want to remove any barriers to new housing projects being constructed, and therefore, they passed this law, and a number of our other cities, municipalities in up and down the state of California who attended this California League of Cities Workshop presented their progress on these objective design standards, and I, I felt that it certainly is something we should be, have on our radar, certainly on our roadmap, and it probably should be a scope of work that this commission's familiar with when it, you know, so that we can provide some support to the staff for the creation of these objective design standards. So, if, if that's not something you guys are thinking about or familiar with, we don't need to talk about it anymore tonight, but that might be something you guys should look into and update us on, update the council on. What I'm not familiar with the law is the date that it requires us to have those in effect by, but a number of cities have actually published these standards and they're living by them, and I have quite, I have a lot of feelings about it as it relates to San Clemente, which is, this is neither the time or place for that, but it is something that I think requires some, a program for us to work together collaboratively, I think, to create these objective design standards in a way that is compatible with our community standards.
Can I interrupt?
Yep.
So, I, I think that's all true and right and great, I'm not sure it's appropriate for the Strategic Implementation Plan right now.
That's my question.
Right, and so is it?
Can we, so I will say with the housing element, it is reviewed by the state through HCD, and so if we do have a requirement to meet certain standards, that they would be reviewing our housing element before it's certified and ensuring that we have that requirement within our Housing Action Program, I would be more than happy to look up that specific bill that you mentioned within our housing element to see if it's mentioned.
Okay.
But again, we are, the Planning Division is currently working on a housing rezoning program where form-based codes or objective design standards, that topic will come up, and so if you have, or if any of the Planning Commissioners have more input, that would be a good time to discuss even citywide standards for that, right?
That could be a future, I think, study session topic, but I just want to make sure it is part of the general plan, and I just thought it should be in here, you know, but that's up to you guys, but I just was looking for it and I didn't see it.
Yeah, I think that that would be an appropriate recommendation to add that to the Community Development SIP for this upcoming year. I, I mentioned familiarity with that, I do see that we did host one community workshop on the objective design standards in February of this year, there will be more outreach and, and discussion, including discussion with this commission on that topic coming forward. There are slides on the city's website under the Long Range Planning section from that workshop to give some initial information about that effort, but yes, I do think it's appropriate to reference that particular effort in the Community Development SIP for the upcoming fiscal year.
Great, thank you.
And Commissioner Cosgrove, just to clarify one thing that's important, is that it's the fact that objective design standards are the ones that are enforceable under certain circumstances, so if there are subjective ones, they would not be enforceable under certain circumstances.
Right.
So, that's why, and that's already the law as of today, so that's why you have a spectrum of where cities are in their adoption of different types of standards.
Yeah, if, in my, in my review of our code, we have subjective ones in there, such as must be in conformance with the community, with the neighbor, neighboring neighborhood, that's in our code, that's not, that's not objective. I'm not advocating for it, we've used that in many, you know, we use that in our design review, we talk about, is this compatible with the neighborhood, but specifically, that is not an objective, and so we are going to need to go through, and wherever we have those, where the word compatibility is used, we need to substitute that for must conform with the following standards. I think it's a large work effort, the work product, I think, is extremely important, and therefore, you know, I'd like to see the commission be more involved, have some input, I think it should be even kicked around in design reviews for some of the options that we would have, some of the new language that we could use, and then bring it back, and we might have study sessions, but just based on what other cities are undergoing, the amount of time they put into it, it was pretty significant to me, from my observation. And my number one concern is anywhere the word compatibility is used, that would need to be replaced with a very objective standard. That's just one example.
I will add, in the list of implementation measures, Implementation Measure 11 and 13 are both set for the Community Development Department to, to run, and they both address objective design standards.
11 and 13?
11 and 13 through the urban design element, and though, you know, these are not comprehensive comments for these items, but that's intentional, so if, in the future, you want to say that these are part of our Strategic Implementation Program, Implementation, Implementation Measure 11 and 13, that would be a good reference for future conversations on this topic.
I've said enough about it, so.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Are there any, we do this annually, right?
Yes.
So, it's just kind of a update of where we're at relative to all these things, is that basically?
It's an, oh, go ahead.
Effectively?
Oh, it's an, yeah, it's an annual update, and it helps City Council determine, basically, how to allocate resources for the budget, it goes along with the budget, the City Council, and they use it as a way to look at our priorities, and what were our high priorities, where are we sitting? So, there's often things throughout the year that we, that become high priorities that are not on this list.
Right.
And so the budget kind of helps City Council determine where that goes, Jonathan, you can speak more to that.
Yeah, I'll just add a clarification item, there's going to be one other item coming before you that's for CIP consistency, so both of those track with the budget cycle, and SIP is going to often relate a little bit more to staff time and efforts that go towards document preparation or reviews of certain topics, and the CIP obviously is more geared towards physical improvements, and they both come before Planning Commission to get your input on whether you believe that those items are, are indeed consistent with our general plan.
Okay, thanks. So, relative to this voluminous list, are there any changes, like what I would consider major, significant changes, or changes that you anticipate to be highly contentious that you want to bring to our attention? And if the answer's no, that's fine.
Yeah, the answer is no, but the most contentious ones are the ones that we completed, which is a good thing, so.
Okay, okay. Do we take an action on this item? Like a recommended approval, or?
Yeah. Determine a review of the project has been, and adopt the resolution, those are the two recommendations.
Yeah, so we're doing a-
Page eight.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, is there any other discussion, or do we want to have a motion on this item?
We'll make a motion.
Great.
To determine a review of the project has been completed according to the California Environmental Quality Act and find the fiscal year 24 SIP is not subject to CEQA according to the state CEQA Guidelines, Section 15378 and Section 15061, subsection B, subsection 3, and adopt Resolution PC 23-005, recommending to the City Council approval of the FY 24 SIP.
Hold on a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 4-0. City Attorney, do, just out of curiosity, when we're like making, making motions and stuff, do we need to read out everything, or can we just say, I move the recommendation that's in the staff report?
So, it would depend whether there's a resolution, certainly if there's a resolution, you can just easily- Certainly, if there's a resolution, you can just easily say, move the staff recommendation because there's a resolution. Also, if you have, if there's any been, any major discussion on an item, like I would also suggest reading the full motion so that it's clear to everybody on the body whether or not any of that discussion item has been included in the motion so that the record is clear.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you have something, Jonathan? Okay. Okay, great. Moving on to our favorite item. Item 8B. Public hearing on zoning amendment 22-366 zoning permit streamlining. And I open the public hearing.
Let's read it again.
No, just, yeah, just.
Okay.
Thank you.
And whenever you're ready, we'll have a staff report.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chair, members of the commission. This item, that was continued from the last meeting in which the Planning Commission had wanted to defer final comments for staff on revisions to incorporate into the draft ordinance before you, to consider some potential other input of other commissioners that were absent. We continue to have some absences. So staff is recommending that we get to any questions that you have to work, if you do want to revisit any items or talk through specific sections, we can do that. And then the recommendation is to continue this item with a direction to make revisions so that we can, in hope to make a, adopt a resolution at the next meeting, and we can proceed to a city council hearing. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Let me tell you where I'm at, fellow commissioners, and then I'd love to hear where, what you guys think. My understanding is, is that we've kind of beat our way through the summary of tables of major things, and staff has kind of done with that. I personally have some notes in my drafts that I want to leave through and just confirm that they were addressed or not in prior discussions. I think probably most of them have, but maybe a couple haven't. I also want to discuss the story polls language. So I have some issues just to hit on a hodgepodge basis. What, if anything, do you guys want or need to talk about? And then based on that, we'll decide how to move forward.
I'm ready to see staff's revision of our comments. I don't have anything to add tonight. I'd like to hear what you want to do with the story polls.
Okay.
And then get it back to staff and give it a date specific that's where we'll see the revisions.
Okay. Cameron, did you have some things that you want to talk about?
Yeah. I want to talk about the coastal review and concept. I want to talk about the special activities permit. And I also want to talk about recalling items from the DZA, the recall procedure.
Okay. So you have a specific list. Commissioner Kemp, do you have any specific items you want to discuss?
I don't have anything to add tonight.
Okay. So I guess with that said, it sounds like Cameron, you and I are the ones with things to bring up.
Yeah.
I would invite you to go first.
Why don't you go first? That's fine.
Okay. And this is just, I just want to leave through, because I had originally, just so everyone knows where I'm coming from, I had gone through this packet and I had made notes. And then when we kind of attacked the issue, we attacked it kind of on a jumping around basis. So I just want to go back and make sure that my various kind of notes were addressed. So bear with me. Well, the first item, coincidentally, is story polls of what comes right up at the beginning of the amendment. So I had gone through and made sort of a draft recommendation of changes relative to the story poll language. Are we able to bring that up on the screen?
Yes.
And just for the record, that's available for the public to review at the secretary's desk.
Okay, yes. And I saw copies in the back as well. We opened the public hearing, right?
You did.
Okay. Are we able to pull up the story poll language on the screen?
Oh, it's, I'm not sure why it's not showing.
Okay.
I have it on my screen.
If not, I think we all have color photocopies, so we could.
It's on your screen?
It's on my screen. I don't know.
Is it in dual-screen mode? Do you have to drag it over to this screen?
No, I don't think so, no. Typically, I just pull it on the screen and it shows it.
Okay.
But I don't, I don't know what's going on.
Okay. So as a background, you know, I saw that the story poll language is in this, these amendments.
There you go, there you go.
These areas that we're considering. And I think that, given the technological advances in computer renderings and so forth, that story polls are much, much less necessary than they, you know, used to be, maybe 40 or 50 years ago when these codes were written. To me, a picture's worth a thousand words and a computer-aided rendering of a project is worth a thousand story polls. So with that, I have made these suggested comments. Would anybody like me to read through them individually or?
I don't think you need to read them.
Okay. Why don't you take a minute and glance through them and see if people like them, don't like them, hate them?
I mean, basically, it looks like what you're suggesting is primarily something that can be requested. It's not required, no longer required.
Yeah, it's no longer required but could be requested. I think I say that the city could require like a computer-aided rendering. So, so I'm not saying that we don't ask for what things are going to look like, but we could require, I think that's what I've got here, and it's been a little while since I wrote this, but we could require, yeah, the very first line, city planner may require applicant submit information to clarify correct otherwise submitted information.
It's further down. Photo simulations and models?
Yeah. So we could require those things, and we can request story polls, but we can't require The story poll language as written, let me see if I can find it, further down, it talks about, the story polls would have to be able to show like where different decks were and pop-outs and, and things like that, which just makes it really complicated and cumbersome and expensive. As a, as an example, the quote, the cost quote for story polls for the memorial care project was over $100,000, which.
Yeah, but it was not required.
No, but it could have been. The city could have required it had they, had they, had they wanted to.
I'm confused. Can I, can I help you?
Please, please.
Okay. Just having limped through the memorial, although I wasn't at the meetings, but I followed it, because I was on my wedding or with my kids. My understanding is that the objection, well, of that situation was there's a lot of confusion because I think some people really wanted it on the commission, and the staff was saying we can't, we can't require it, and so it wasn't done. Then at the council level, there was the back and forth of.
Really, I'm sorry, really wanted what? Really wanted story polls?
Yeah, I heard, I heard, I heard commissioners say, we should have them, and I heard staff say, we cannot require it. I was just watching it over the YouTube. And then the stimuli, and then what was, a substitute was offered was these computer Where I was thinking, the compromise, where I thought you were originally going was to simplify the story polls and say, instead of having a network of story polls that shows all elevations, that we just showed one elevation, which would be the highest elevation point. The two points on either end at the highest elevations, that's also, you'd have two story polls, maybe a couple in the middle to support it. That's it. No, nothing crazy like what you're saying, because I agree with that. That's excessive. And when you see story poll structures like that, with every part of the massing elevation shown, it's almost impossible to figure out what's going on.
Right.
So I thought that where you were originally going, because I've heard you talk to this in the past, and I thought it was a good idea, that we, that we simplify our story poll procedures to just only be the two highest points in that, or the highest point, period. That's it. Nothing else.
So to me, that would be a significant improvement over what's in the code right now.
Yeah.
I would like to make it, my, what I'm suggesting is that the city can't require them. The applicant could still do them. The applicant might want to do them. They might want to show, hey, look, you know, we put it up here and we're not going to be blocking all these people's views that are all afraid of it. So the applicant might still find value in that.
Would you be open to a compromise where we only require it if they are asking for a height variance?
I'm open to any improvements that.
And then we just, the requirement is the highest point only.
And by the way, I do think that, you know, we're missing three of our members here tonight, so it's probably, you know.
Maybe we could ask staff to kind of come back with it framed as an option, like what they would recommend, like, here's what it currently does, here's what we discussed. I mean, if you want to say, because it's easy for you to say, I'd like it to be where we can't require it at all, and that it's up to the applicant, but maybe we could ask staff to also show the option that I was suggesting, which is require it only if there's a height variance requested, and only show the very highest elements of the project in one area only.
And let me be clear, I think that's a great improvement over what's in the code right now.
Okay.
So.
Would you be comfortable asking staff maybe just to include that in their, a little summary of that?
As an option?
Yeah, when they, when they bring it back?
Sure. I mean, I'd still like to, you know, when there's hopefully more members here.
Yeah.
And we consider another time, I'm still going to suggest, hey, I like this version.
Yeah.
But we'll see what the body of the commission wants.
Yeah, perfect. Okay, sounds good.
Okay. Does staff have enough direction on that item?
Well, I do want to point out when they're required, just to be clear.
What does the current code say?
Yeah, they're required when you have a project in a view corridor, which does relate in some way to, you know, something like a height variance in some indirect way. And then when it's a three-story building, I think in the coastal zone, I think is the other, right here. So the construction or expansion of a three-story structure in the architectural overlay district, and when the project has potential to affect public view corridors from public places in the coastal zone, that's when they're required currently.
Okay. So it's a limited application of the story poll. It's not citywide?
Well, the coastal zone is pretty much everything.
It's where there's a view to the coast.
West of the freeway. That's a pretty enormous swath of, of area.
Yeah, but it wouldn't have included the memorial care.
Yeah, that's right. They were not in the coastal zone.
Probably not.
No. And it's usually, I mean, it is west of, at least El Camino Real.
There's two public view corridors in the coastal zone. There's one looking in North Beach towards.
Down Pico.
Down Pico.
Yeah.
And then there's in the Pirable specific plan.
Yeah.
That's, that's the more extent of the areas that would apply here.
So you're saying it's only in the public view corridors of the coastal zone?
Correct. And those are identified in the general plan and coastal landings plan.
Okay.
That's the only places where it's required, polls?
Required. And then also, the city, I think, has the option to require them beyond that if there's some need. So like, like the Planning Commission, there's language right here, I think it says, a city planner or review authority may require applicant. So similar to other aspects of applications, if the Planning Commission determines that information is needed to evaluate some aspect of the project, let's say like a environmental impact report, then the Planning Commission can require story polls or some other method. There's discretion built into the language of the code currently.
Well, I think, if I'm not mistaken, the way it's written right now, the city planner could basically require them. If they deem that they're required, they could require them anywhere. Is that an accurate reading of that or no?
May require.
May require a variety of tools if needed to evaluate visual impacts. And so you could, the commission, say one option is to refine that and say that the review authority has that decision-making authority. So like the Planning Commission or the zoning administrator, city council versus the city planner. But that, what that would mean is when a project would go, that, that creates potentially some challenges because we have to evaluate CEQA before we present a recommendation. So we have to think about that.
That seems awkward to me because if it was, for example, the Planning Commission can require story polls, so the applicant gets all the way to Planning Commission hearing, and then we sit up here and go, go put up story polls, see in 60 days. That does not seem.
Streamlined.
Friendly, exactly.
Yeah.
But if you look from somebody whose view is going to be affected, you know, from a citizen, you're asking that citizen to accept a computer-generated, you know, program, which I think a lot of the public is going to want to know, how do I know that this computer-generated program is valid? That'd be the first thing I'd ask. Where you, you could see a poll with a little red thing and to see what the height of that building is going to be, and look at it during the day to see how your view is affected. I think we need to bend both ways. We need to try to streamline, but we also can't just streamline and throw out what the public might benefit from.
Trust the best, trust the most.
Right. Well, you know, if we go that way, I like Cameron's idea of just the highest points, right? Just, just one string along the highest points. We could certainly require, I think, that, you know, computer-aided renderings be stamped by an architect or engineer. They're certifying that, hey, these are, you know, accurate representations. Because story polls are certified by a surveyor. They're certified that these are at the right height. So we could require that same standard for renderings.
What we could do is have a third party review the models, the simulations, and certify them.
It's a good idea.
Something that the public could trust versus seeing it and trusting their eyeballs. Well, those story polls are tough to.
Yeah.
Understand as well. Even what they are.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, well, this is, I would suggest, I mean, I certainly heard what you guys say. I do think we should talk about it when there's a more full body, because I think other people have thoughts on it as well.
Okay.
And to me, any improvement is an improvement on this, on this. I don't quite know how to call these out. I'm just going through the packet. Item 17 dot 12 dot 065, which on, one of, one of the printouts I have is on F10, but I'm not looking at like the compare right version.
This is the clean version?
I think this is the clean version. This is what came out the first time.
Okay.
It's withdrawal of inactive applications.
Yes, withdrawal of inactive applications.
Says the city planner has authority to withdraw applications that are inactive for 60 days. We talked about this to some extent, didn't we? Inactive and what deems, what deems it inactive? Inactive and what deems, what deems it inactive? And, because 60 days, you know, staff can request something that could take longer than 60 days per, per, per prepare.
Now, what deems it inactive is if the city staff were obligated to write a letter to the applicant, notifying them what we need to complete an application.
Right.
And if we don't get a response, then it's inactive.
Okay. So... You, we give them one email, and then if they don't respond, then 60 days later, we mark it inactive?
This gives us a tool if city staff is making an effort to communicate with the applicant, and they're not making a return effort to continue with their application. And inactive applications, kind of, when they group up after a while, they, they can require administrative work to, to contact the applicant, versus having a closed application. So, cities have a procedure like this, where they define when the application is, what, what steps have to be taken to close the application, when it's just on hold?
I don't, I personally, and I'd love to hear what my fellow commissioners think, I personally don't think this is particularly user-friendly. I know I've mentioned this before, but, like, if, if I'm an applicant, because, and I've been an applicant many times, okay? And the city asks me for, hey, you need to produce this, and this, and this, and floor plans, and elevations, and this and that, it could easily take longer than that period of time. Now, you guys might not consider it inactive, but if I'm an applicant, and you almost, what you're saying is, well, I have to call them and bug them and see where they're at. No, you don't. If I'm an applicant and I want my project to move forward, I'm going to be bugging you to, to, hey, what do I, how did you guys want me to prepare this? What are we looking for on this dock, whatever? But it, it doesn't seem like, giving them 60 days and then kicking them out of the list, I don't, I don't really see much benefit to the city, but I don't, I also don't see much need to be following up with them. If they want their project to move forward, they should be submitting things and bugging you. How do I do this? I misunderstood that, whatever. But if it's just on a list and not getting, not moving forward, that's kind of their problem. But to be kind of proactively booting them out of the list and then making them apply again, that doesn't seem like it's customer-friendly to me. How do you guys feel about this?
Well, what's the goal? It's to get them off the books, right? So, I mean, how is that helping staff?
The, the goal is, we don't aggressively close applications. We want a tool to address applications that have clearly been stagnant for some time. We've had applications sit around for years, and we make an effort to contact the applicant. Well, there's a deposit account usually. So, there's funds in a deposit account that are sitting there. City's obligated to return those funds. Sometimes people move. Yes, you would think that some people would want their money, or to, to, to do things on projects, but then the city has to keep an open account, and be ready to refund the money, and be ready to kind of recollect where we were, say, years ago on a project, or writing a new letter to tell them what they need. And it can become a hindrance on the overall function of the division, when you look at everything collectively that we do, and the time, the resources that we have to do it. So, the idea behind this is not to, to just close applications. It's when we write somebody and they say, hey, we, you know, we need two weeks to get that done. Okay, you need two weeks. But if we write them and they don't write back, and it happens over and over again, at some point, that's what this is for.
Hey, I don't want to interrupt, but I think there's probably a middle ground here.
Maybe 180 days or something?
Sixty, yeah, 60 days is too quick, but maybe six months?
Yeah.
Agreed, yeah.
I'd say 180 days, yeah.
And it becomes dormant, and it should be closed.
Yeah.
Right.
And I get that. And then you just refund the amount and move on.
Can we change that to six months?
It's currently 180 days. So, staff, that, that, six months. So, oh, I think staff would suggest that the first time, the, the first amount of time matters more than the second amount of time. Because the first amount of time is the warning, right? When something's, hey, your application is inactive, you have a certain amount of time to get back to us. But after that time cuts in, then we have another time period. So, that, that's the, the main timeframe that has not worked. We've found it just doesn't work.
So, what's the 60 days? Is that for the first warning?
No, so, currently, so if you look at the revised wording, it says, it goes from, when an application is inactive, from 90 days, it drops it down to 30 days. And then we send a written correspondence, and if they don't follow up, then, uh, let's see, if we don't receive it within the 30 days, then the city can act for, and within 30 days to close it.
Okay, so the total timeframe may be six months by the time you do all that stuff, right? The multiple warnings? So, it could be a maximum?
Yeah, I think, so when you, when you look at it now, it says six months, but it's six, it's 90 days to send a warning, so if it's inactive, after it's inactive for 90 days, then we're authorized to send a notice. And then, if they don't do anything, then in 90 days, we can close it. I think that the issue is, we would rather not be wait, like, have to wait 90 days to tell someone that their application is inactive.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think that's reasonable. Because these things do take time. And we've already got, if you add all that up, we've got the six months. You were saying there's applications that have been around for years, right? So, automatically, you're going to, you're going to close those. Soon as you hit that six, six months is going to come quick. You know, for a lot of these, especially these more involved...
Yeah, sure.
Applications. Anyway, that's my input.
Well, where are we at? Are we saying that as written, it's, it's...
I think you just need, of course, it sounds like... If you got them there sitting.
Yeah, if you got them up sitting around for years, and then you're saying, but we can do it six, six months now, I mean, that's on you guys, if you're not doing it.
I think that the, the timeframe that staff would at, at least like to cut down is the first timeframe. When an application is inactive, right now, it says 90 days, dropping it down to 30 days or more, correspondence is sent to inform applicants that they have, and if you want it six months total, then you can, you know, beef that time up.
I, I just, I think 30 days seems super short. I mean, 30 days, someone could be on vacation for that time. Heck, we've got people on this commission to go for 30-day vacations.
I wish.
That's the, that's the time to say that it's inactive, you have six months to get us materials. So, that's just to give a, that's where we have the ability to write a letter saying something is inactive, and you have a certain amount of time to get us materials.
Okay, well, I'd like to see the total amount of time be six months. Is it, so, is 30 plus 60, that's what I'm seeing? Do you guys have a change to? 30 plus 60?
So, let me understand, the goal is for it to be six months total? And we can work on double language?
Yes.
I think so.
Okay. All right, I'll, I'll figure out the wording.
I would propose 60 days and 120 days, for a total of, give them 60 days for your first email, and then 120 days to respond.
Well, he's got the six months, and then he'll come back.
Okay.
I think that's a win.
Great.
Yeah. I trust Christopher to come back with something good.
Okay.
All right, guys, this is going to take a little while while I filter through these things.
It's all yellow, sticky things are going.
Well, we've, we've hit a bunch of them already in, in prayer hearings. So, I have a note here. This is in the table around, on that red line version, D-4546, Development Activities, Review Process for Development Permits.
D what? D?
D-46 and D-47.
Okay.
And we'll, I'm sorry, what is it?
D-46, D-47.
Which item on that page?
I'm under C-4.
Okay.
It says, two-story family, single-family dwellings and duplexes that are across the street or abutting designated historical resources. And then marks if the building is less than five-foot front setback between the first and second floors, or a 30-foot front setback for the building height. This is only for, it, it says process three, but I made a note to process two. Is process three planning commission?
The, yes, process three. And then the commission had given us, uh, larger direction not to have any staff decisions for these items, so it would be zoning administrator...
Okay.
Across the board. So, staff was going to be changing this wording and just saying, new single-family dwellings and duplexes that are across, and then we were told also about abutting, to change, to clarify the term abutting. But nevertheless, across the street, across the street from historic resources and landmarks, and then make that a zoning administrator item.
Okay.
So, it'd be a lot simpler, because we're not splitting it into staff and zoning administrator anymore.
Okay. And item G-1 on the next page, development on new parcels created from a subdivision of property, process three. Can that be process two? I mean, if, because a new, a new subdivision, right, the, the planning commission would have reviewed the subdivision and kind of the development plan of that subdivision, to lay out the streets, the lot sizes, and all that stuff. We could assume that a subdivision is going to be, you know, like a tract. So, the, the homes on those subdivided lots, do they need to come back to planning commission for approval? Seems to me like that could be at a lower level.
Based on the current code, it would go to the planning commission, but if there's support, it could be streamlined to a lower level. I think within the... We'd have to look at the public notice, you know, for the next meeting. We might have to re-notice the project, but that can be done if there's, if we have to re-notice it, then we could look at that, and we'd have to consider things.
Okay. I, I'd suggest that homes in a subdivision don't need to come to us. How do you guys feel about that?
I'd need examples.
Yeah, I, I think that...
I'm not sure.
If you look at a subdivision...
That's pretty big to me.
Yeah, you don't see the detail normally.
Yeah, a tentative tract map does not include any, which we, by the way, we haven't seen any. I haven't seen any on this commission, although I do see them floating by on council agendas from time to time, which always confuses me. How does a tentative tract map get to council? Not through planning, but that's another topic for another day. So, but yeah, I agree with Commissioner Camp. I, I don't, as a practical matter, I don't even think we're ever going to see any of these things. I mean, we're all built out. So, I don't know that it really matters, but I would be concerned about cutting, making this a process two.
Okay, okay.
Uh, just clarification that the zoning ordinance does require tentative tract maps to go to the planning commission before it goes to city council.
Okay, I just, I still see them on council agendas, like I saw one on their agenda for last night.
Oh, okay, I'm not sure.
Or like a lot split type thing.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and I don't, we didn't see it, so I just like, that's confusing, but...
That's a small subdivision.
Yeah, yeah. I think it was a lot split, just...
Not at Tolega or something?
No, 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 no. It was small. It was, I think, a lot split.
Okay, that's my comments. Do you have items?
Commissioners, if I could just chime in real quick, what, what you may have been seeing is, there's also differentiation, and Christopher, maybe this is something that we can clarify here, between tentative parcel maps and tentative tract maps. And so, typically, if there's a development that includes four units or fewer, that would go to the zoning administrator. And then, the final map, however, in any case, would always go to the city council.
Council, yeah, okay.
So, beyond four units would be something that does come to the...
Yeah, and this is two, so that makes sense, that we didn't see it. Okay, if you guys don't mind, I have a couple, three items, I think, before. And I want to lead, which is having, if you don't mind, Christopher, if you could help me frame it, so that everyone has the context of what I'm talking about. So, the first one is, and what I'm going over is table, in our zoning code, is seventeen dot one-two dot zero two-zero, so seventeen dot twelve dot zero two-zero. It's D-2, I believe it's D-2. Sorry, I got some of my pages mixed up, but D-2 and D-3. And the context of my comments are the public notice, and in some of these cases, there's no change. But I'm bringing it up anyways. So, the first one, Christopher, I was hoping you could help me explain to everybody, is what is a coastal review in concept?
Yes, a coastal review in concept is, it's a ministerial action, means it's a staff level, like check-the-boxes review, of whether a project is consistent with the zoning ordinance. It's not a discretionary type of decision that goes through a public hearing. If a project requires a public hearing, it would be done before the coastal review in concept, just like, let's say you're doing a development project, and, or let's do a subdivision, because we were just talking about that. You do a subdivision with buildings, with that, then after the fact, you would come in for building permits, after you go through that public hearing. That's what the coastal review in concept is. It's a, it's a city review of a project, and then it goes to the coastal commission, where they would act on the project, and they would come back then, where we would review the plans to make sure they match what we reviewed in concept to give them a building permit. So, it's a plan check for coastal.
And I feel like sometimes that's not okay. Like, we have projects that are in our coastal zone that could be large, and then they just, the staff is like, well, there's nothing to see here, checking all boxes on, on this and that, let's just send it over to the coastal commission. With no public hearing, no public notice, and, and off it goes. And I'm concerned about large projects where they don't, they're not in the DMT, they're not, they don't come here, they just get pushed from administratively to coastal commission. And I want to avoid large mistakes, if, you know. An example is Vista Marina, that resulted in lawsuits by residents, because it went through coastal review, went to planning commi, went to coastal commission, no public notice, and when residents found out about it, lawsuits. And I, those are the types of situations where I, I feel like there's a lesson learned, and we should be trying to figure out, how do we apply that when we're doing code revisions like this? And apply a lesson learned, and figure out, how do we catch those big ones? Right? There's, unless there's an EIR, there's actually no public notice. So, if we look at Boca Bluffs, there's some public notice, because there's going to be an EIR, but otherwise, that would just be, go on by the coastal commission, no public notice. And that's, that's, that's huge. So, there's concern I have about that, and I'd like to figure out if there's a way that we could apply some lessons learned to our coastal review in concept, and have some kind of public notice on it. What are your thoughts? What are your thoughts? We don't need to get hammered out tonight, but if I just lodge the concern, and you guys want to talk about it with staff, and then maybe when you come back, address it then, when the larger group is here, I'm okay with that. I just want to let me get the concern out there, and have the staff think about it and come back with their thoughts.
Okay, we, yeah, we can think about it. I do want to point out that we process a good number of in-concepts per year, and the vast majority of them have no issue.
Okay.
I will say that the zoning ordinance, if there's a type of project where the public believes that there should be a public hearing for something that it doesn't, that's a code requirement where we would need to specify that that type of project requires a public hearing. That's how you would require the public notice. The in-concept is a separate issue, really, because it's a plan check. So the question really is, are there any types of projects that the city thinks should be a public hearing that aren't right now, and that would have to be reflected in the zoning ordinance? We weren't really directed to do that as part of this, your, the scope was.
I know, less hearings, not more.
Specific, yeah, but the planning commission has the ability in its motion to make a recommendation to city council.
Right.
To make changes beyond that.
How do we avoid Vista Marinas? That's kind of the question that I have. How do we avoid those? Because the way I understand is it went from a review in concept to coastal commission to building permit, and then people realize, wait a minute, you're building in a coastal canyon. That isn't, and actually wasn't violation, and so maybe that's just a mistake in the processing. Maybe that plan check was, just there was, there was an issue with that, I don't know. But I wanna, the feedback I get from people are, that was a major, that was a major fight, and it took a lot of time and resources, and they didn't feel that the city's process worked there.
I think, you know, we could talk about it like you suggested.
Yeah.
For the next meeting. I'll just say that we're, not, not long ago, Commissioner Cosgrove, you noted, we're not likely to see a lot more subdivisions.
Yeah.
Okay. We do have some lots that were created from subdivisions before the coastal act, and they're unusual lots. This is one of them. It's been on the market and off the market.
Mm-hmm.
So the, when you look at the zoning ordinance, there's rules that apply to development in canyons. The question is, are, is there something with those rules that the community wants to change? Then that's, that's what the, what I'm hearing, that what would be tied to this conversation.
Gotcha.
Not so much in concept.
Gotcha.
Is there some, I do want to make a note also.
I understand what you're saying, I like what you're saying, that makes sense.
But, but it's important to note that we're working on the local coastal program implementation plan.
Yes.
Which is the zoning code for the coastal zone.
Correct.
And.
Maybe that's the right place to have that addressed.
We're working on it right now.
Yes, makes sense, the LCP.
Yeah, there's gonna be a public review period for that. We're, just for the benefit of the public, we're working through a variety of issues, comments that we got from the coastal commission, but that, that's still ongoing.
Okay, I'm gonna table that one in my agenda for now. I hear what you're saying, and that's, that gives me something to think about, too. That's good, okay. Did anyone else have anything you want to share about that before I move on to the next one? Okay. Special activities permit, that's a process one. My concern is that depending on the size of that, a special activity, you know, it's the kind of thing that the public may need to know, should know about. So we did, as an example, review the special activities permit for the outlet mall, and that was a bundle of them and so forth. But if there are, there can, we need to, I'm, I'm sensitive to neighborhoods, and if somebody wants to, you know, have a large special activity in their neighborhood, it seems to me prudent that neighbors be notified of that. And maybe that's where the answer is. It's not in a public hearing, but it's in our permit process that if it's in a neighborhood, they need to notify everyone within three hundred feet that they've applied for this with the city, and that there's an opportunity for them to call the city and voice their concern. I just want to make sure that there's some public notification. If no one wants to do a special activity, shut down, you know, part of their neighborhood to do a wedding, or a big reception, or some event, that they get, you know, or maybe it's something down in the Pier Bowl area. It's in a public space, but it's in the Pier Bowl area, one of our, or on North Beach, that's one of our very sensitive areas, but there's no public notice, it's just approved, and all of a sudden, there's these huge things going on, and people are like, what, how'd that, how'd that get permitted? So that, that's kind of where I'm going with that. So either Jonathan or Christopher, do you have any thoughts on maybe, on that?
Yeah, I'll chime in real quick. I think that this section could use some modification, and maybe there's a happy landing where we delineate between activities that the commission thinks generate concern. On the flip side, we also, right now, the interpretation of this section has been, you get one administrative activity in the year, and beyond that, then you're stuck. So we also will get requests for something as simple as a sidewalk sale, that has really no impact for public concern.
Right.
And now they have to go to a public hearing to have, you know, another sidewalk sale on a Saturday. So maybe there's some room to delineate where, you know, multiple days can be approved administratively in the spirit of streamlining, that's the goal of this, but also then require hearings for specific types of activities. That would be on the commission.
Yeah, well, to me, I was thinking more location-based. If it's in a neighborhood, then, may not have a public hearing, but there needs to be public notification.
In a residential zone?
Yes, in a residential zone, that, you know, we have just a administrative procedure that says, in accordance with our process, if you are requesting this, you need to show us that you've notified within a hundred or two hundred feet of where this is gonna happen, and that you have done that with, within a certain amount of time, fourteen days or something, prior to this being processed, so that there's an opportunity for the public to call in and say, no, we don't want that in our neighborhood. And then you guys would have awareness that there's a concern. I agree, the commercial site stuff, no, we wouldn't, we don't want to slow that down. Or if it's in, again, one of our high tourist areas, like North Beach, or in the Pier Bowl area, in front of the pier, there needs to be some way that the staff can look at that and say, you know, just, should this have a public hearing, or, you know, type of thing. I'm not sure how to do that. I'm just saying, I've get, I've gotten a few comments from people about, you know, back in the day, this used, you know, this neighborhood had this problem, and we, it's, they moved and it went away, but how do we, how do we get, how do we get noticed on that? I'm like, I have no idea. So that's just where I'm coming from, it just, maybe we could just look at that procedure, and look at things that have impact, and how do we be sensitive to that?
Yeah, I think that we can collaborate on putting together a recommendation. I want to make one other clarification. This may overlap with some of the complaints you've received. There are special activities, and there are special events. So special events are those that occur on city property. I am aware that there were some complaints about, for instance, a concert at North Beach that occurred last summer. That was a special event permit, that's, and that's not covered by Title XVII, so we wouldn't be getting into that discussion here.
Okay.
So the special activities will just be those that occur on private property, but yes, I think that we can collaborate on capturing items of concern, making sure that.
I'm more on the activities permit.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That there's noticing appropriate for those.
Yes, okay. The other, yeah, did you want to say something, Christopher? Yeah, no, go ahead.
Yeah, so we were actually working on some changes to this section, to address the comment about the, like, if you want two parking lot sales or something. And that was going to be a separate ordinance.
Okay.
Is there desire to address that with this, this project?
I'll leave it to you guys, I don't, I just want to bring it to your attention and see if you guys could give it a little bit of a thought, and look at it, and see how we could just be sensitive to activities in sensitive areas, where there's no visibility for impact to that, and then it just happens, and people are just, it's surprised.
Okay, we can discuss it, and, and then depending on the timing of when this is continued, if we, if staff has adequate time, maybe we propose something, if not, then it'd be part of the other project.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Okay. The other thing I wanted to bring up is that because the streamlining, first of all, when I say streamlining, I'm not referring to where we're consolidating permits and stuff like that. I'm referring to where we eliminate a public hearing in favor of a zoning administrator As a safeguard, whenever we eliminate a public hearing, I, I feel like we have to have a safeguard. So what I'd like to propose to staff is, if you, and you guys, if you would think about this, too, a new appeal process. So if we're gonna push more and more things to administratively without a public notice and public hearing, well, there would be public notice, but it's down at the ZA level, that the planning commission get in their packet all ZA-level decisions, and we have appeal authority to recall the item.
Yeah, to comment on that, there's, for, just to add a reminder that we, staff heard from the commission that there was not support for eliminating public hearings on development review type ideas that were presented. So the maximum streamlining would be down to a zoning administrator level. The zoning administrator process for, for, just, oh, let me, before I go there, we have heard from the commission at different times during these meetings about the idea of the commission having the ability to review staff-level decisions on things like an administrative development permit, if it's like a fence in the architectural overlay or whatnot, on a consent calendar, and if the commission doesn't, the public doesn't request an item to be pulled, or the planning commission doesn't have questions, then everything is moved like a city council consent calendar. That was something that's been talked about, so I'd like to, we didn't hear conclusively whether that's something that the commission wants staff to draft and bring back. That's something that I wanted to, to ask about.
I think you're saying something different, though, right?
Yes, that's.
He's saying.
Yeah, there's two parts to it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Will you continue?
Yeah, I was, I was kind of like, there's, the zoning administrator part is, staff supports more the idea of having a check on a review of staff decisions, mainly because it works with the timeline for having adequate public review, transparency, and not slowing things down, because we have to be mindful of when decisions occur, and there's a timeline. So when a zoning administrator decision occurs, it's after the planning commission meeting. So if a zoning administrator decision occurs after a planning commission meeting, that means the minutes for that would go to the next planning commission meeting, and there's like a chain of events. It could potentially slow down the process if, if the planning, depending upon the timing of when that goes in the packet. So that's something that staff has a little bit more concern on a change like that, and it's, it's our position that zoning administrator decisions already go to the city council. So if they want to call it up, just like this planning commission decisions, then they can do so. So that's our, our recommendation.
Okay, so the projects that are going to the ZA, a large majority of those are going to the design review subcommittee, or not?
No, not unless the, the city planner or the zoning administrator can require a design review subcommittee review.
That's right.
There's some limited cases where the code requires it, no matter what. So the, the code does say that if a project doesn't meet the design guidelines, or some questionable aspect of the project, it should go to a design review subcommittee. Also, there's times where we elect to take it to the design review subcommittee anyway, like if it's a high visible property, something sensitive, where we want to, like a landmark property, then we may take it to the cultural heritage subcommittee anyway. That's, that's built into the code. Or is planning commission decisions almost automatically go to designer review subcommittee?
Right, so what I, when we talk about the streamlining part, where we are removing the sub, the design review subcommittee, and just in favor of direct to the ZA, is kind of what I was trying to safeguard, like, you know, because I just don't have a feel for that. What I do have a feel for is having sit on the design review for a while now, I do feel there's a good working relationship with staff at that, with that group. And I can tell when the staff is bringing something to us, because they're, without saying it, they really want our help. Right? It's a project that's a little, that's a little off, it's a little off, they can't figure out exactly where, or it doesn't exactly fit, it's, it's in line with everything, check the box, but there's something not right about it, help. And I, so that's great, because I feel like the staff is using us effectively, because then we can talk to the applicant directly about, why did you make that design choice? Did you consider these choices? And it's actually always a productive conversation. And they're like, no, we didn't think about that, that's a good idea. We, you know what, let's, we're gonna work on that. And it's very, it's very, I think, productive, and benefits the city greatly, because good, mediocre projects are turned into good projects, and bad projects are, are head off at the pass. So it does preserve our city's charm. I think it does a lot to do that. And so that, I don't have a concern about, but I was just more coming from the angle of, hey, we're gonna start streamlining, and we just want to avoid a lot of these different public hearings, so we're just gonna go right to the ZA. And so I'm like, okay, if that's, I just don't know what that flow's gonna be. And that's where I was saying, well, if we start to see a lot going to the ZA, that we're like, hey, we could have added value to that project, why did that go to the ZA? I want to be able to say, stop, bring that back, right?
But the ZA is a public hearing.
Yeah, that's, that's, right, yeah.
So you're talking about public hearing. I think what you were trying to, I could have read that wrong, but you're trying to give us an option to appeal a project that's already been ruled on.
Mm-hmm.
By the ZA.
Yes.
If we see a problem.
Yeah.
Because we don't really have that option, no, do we?
No.
Yeah.
We don't have the option.
But we have to pay some kind of fee.
It goes to the council, and they have to deal, deal with it. And that's, you know, that can be fine. Anyway.
Well, what staff is saying is if we do that, it's gonna lengthen the time because of the.
Yeah.
The lead time for, for staff report generation and to get into our packets and stuff. Now the person has a, has a ZA approval, but they don't, they're not out of the appeal period, the appeal period's maybe gonna go to thirty days or something by the, because of the cycling of our.
Yeah.
Another thing is, you know, as planning commissioners, we can go to the ZA hearings and make comment.
Mm-hmm.
So like if, if, you know, we were concerned, we could be monitoring the ZA's, you know, agendas.
Yeah.
And, and go proactively and, you know, make points there, hey, I think this should be reviewed by the DRC.
Yeah.
Or whatever.
Yeah.
So, you know.
Fair enough, okay.
I understand your desire.
Yeah.
But with, given the cycling of the, or maybe, or maybe it's even, okay, they're gonna kick, the ZA's gonna kick out a, an email to the planning commissioners, and they have a, you know, ten-day window to, by email, but to wait for the next agenda just really lengthens it out.
I think it just shifts the burden back to us to just be proactive and just monitor the ZA, and if we're starting to see stuff go through that maybe we don't feel comfortable with, we need to start just raising that up, and working with the staff to get the workflow dialed in. Sorry, Gary, go ahead.
I was gonna say, there's only one day difference between council meeting and the planning commission. So if you're talking about a ZA decision that's made after our meeting, and then saying it has to wait till the next planning commission, it's gotta wait till the next city council meeting, which is one day before.
meeting, which is one day before our meeting. So it's not like a gigantic, that's only a 24 hour difference. My recall, because I ran out of my house without my documents, is that in the new so-called streamline, there are things that the planning commission can appeal. I don't know if ZA was one, but, I mean, if we had such a concern, if it has to go through the council, a consent calendar, you can pull it off the consent calendar. But the biggest thing is just, I think we do get actions of the ZA here, but it's probably after the council. That's where the disadvantage is. We see it in our packet, 24 hour, well, not if we get it on Friday. We do see what, well, if we looked at the council's agenda. So, I mean.
We have to be proactive.
Yeah, I think that's what it's really saying. That's what I'm kind of coming to realization.
It's appealable because you could go to the council meeting, but you'd have to kind of know, like, after we have this meeting today, what the zoning administrator is going to do. If you really don't like it, you got to pull it off the council's consent calendar. Because we'll see it, we'll see it the day after.
The last thing to do is review the packet that's going to ZA.
Yeah.
And if you see one that's questionable.
Get involved there, yeah.
Because I don't really see that much in our packets from the ZA. I mean, every now and there is something in there, but I don't really see stuff.
No, there isn't information on the ZA items. There is a list of staff waiver approvals.
Okay.
And, but the planning commission can't appeal those currently. You can ask questions about them.
Okay. And that's what you're thinking, maybe that's more of an appropriate place to add the, the appeal step is what the staff waivers.
I'm responding to questions and comments the commission has had about it. Should, should staff, should we be able to call up those things? I'm just making a point that they're kind of distinguishing what staff supports versus doesn't. And we're more supportive of the, of possibly doing a, a call up of staff decisions, maybe as a means of addressing concerns by, like the historic society, for example, on like training of staff and turnover, some of those comments, then, you know, we're not doing public notice of staff decisions. There's already an appeal period of staff decisions, so it wouldn't slow things down because staff is confident that we're making good decisions. And, you know, if one out of 100 someone has a question about, then they could ask the planning commission to pull it and we can talk about it. So we have less concerns about that idea.
Okay.
But, you know, we don't have all seven commissioners here, so if there's some, I'd like to get some idea of whether there's support for that.
Yeah.
And if there is, then we may have like a, an attachment where if there was interest in doing it, then you can incorporate it at the meeting.
This has been helpful. I don't feel the need to go on any further about it. So, back to you, Scott.
Are there any other comments from any other commission members?
I do have a comment. So in terms of the authority of the planning commission, it's delegated authority from the city council. And so that's what we're talking about basically in, in the code about what the planning commission would do, right? So if it's not something that's delegated, it would not be appropriate to comment on it. So the idea of going to a zoning commission hearing as a commissioner who's just decided to be proactive would be outside the scope of what's been designated to the planning commission unless there was a process in the zoning code for that. That's not to say you couldn't go and make a public comment as a, a member of the public, but you couldn't go as a planning commissioner because it's not within the scope of your authority. So if that is an idea that you want to explore, I would say include some kind of process in the zoning code amendment as opposed to, you know, some informal procedure.
And that's why I was bringing it up, is to change the zoning to give us more of that authority, because we don't have it. And if we're moving things in a so-called streamlined fashion where there, we're taking public, our steps out, then what's, again, what's that safeguard measure to make sure that over time that doesn't get out of hand? And we currently can't do that. So we'd need a change in the zoning to do it, but I don't want to belabor it.
Can I just clarify what you're saying? Because I think the ZA has the ability, maybe authority, to kick a project to planning commission, right? Currently, if they think that they need, need to do that.
It's not the other way around.
Yeah. So is, so what you're saying is we couldn't even make a suggestion as a planning commissioner for them to do that.
Well, but I think as a member of the public, we can, right? We can show up to the, to the ZA, sit there, listen and say, hey, I'm, you know, Steve Camp and I'm here as a member of the public and I take issue with this project. You just can't say, go and flex and say, I'm vice chair.
Pro temp.
Pro temp special.
And I'm appealing it to the planning commission, which you can't do.
And I think we should, you know.
All right, I get it.
Okay.
Just something to think about since the zoning is open. We're making changes.
Right. Any other questions or comments? Okay, then I will close the public hearing. And I think we need a motion probably to continue the item.
I would make a motion to continue to review and provide comments on the proposed draft ordinance and other materials provided for the prior hearings on March the 8th and March the 22nd, 2023, and continue the public hearing to, what do we want to do, next meeting or the meeting after that or?
No, you also need to reopen the public hearing to continue it.
Or can we leave the public hearing open and continue the public hearing until the date specific?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, I reopened the public hearing. I never should have closed it.
Correct, if you're going to continue it.
Right.
Right.
So to continue the public hearing too, and when does staff want to, will you be ready?
I would recommend June 7th, just looking at the calendar of when your colleagues will be returned to their seats. I think that we should have a full commission on that date.
Okay, to June the 7th, 2023, allowing staff time to revise the proposed zoning amendments based on the planning commission's recommended edits. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item passes 4-0. Great. That's a milestone.
Christopher, thanks for hanging in there with us.
Oh, yeah. Thank you for your help.
Yeah, no, you're the, you're the helpful one. We're, we're slowing you down.
Same to you.
That's hard to tell. Yeah.
We've already handled the new business. There's no old business reports from, of commissioners and staff.
I'd like, sorry, where are we?
On the agenda, couple, three pages deep or so, page four actually.
Should we be carrying around this stuff? Are you going to come back with more, with the revised stuff, you know?
I would keep it.
Okay.
Because you have notes on there.
Okay.
But no, I will be giving you all new material, but you may want to look at your notes.
Yeah, gotcha, okay.
Okay, reports of commissioners and staff. Commissioner Camp, do you have a comment?
Yes. So regarding the car show, have there been complaints about the continuing racing and noise and, because I hear it at my house and I'm just curious, it doesn't really bother me, but I know it bothers some of my neighbors. And so I'm just wondering if there's been any follow-up on monitoring the noise and the racing that goes on.
I haven't been informed of any complaints. We did incorporate a condition of approval requiring noise monitoring. So if there's a specific day or time, I mean, Saturday is the day that those occur. If there's a specific date that.
It's Saturday morning, typically around 10, you know, between 10 and 11. And sure, there's motorcycles racing down the freeway and whatever, but it's specifically at that time. So I have to kind of associate it and it's coming from that direction. But if nobody's complaining, I guess, you know.
I haven't received any complaints. I will, though, request some data regarding that noise monitoring so I can have that available to field that question in the future.
We also put a condition on there that they needed to log and make available to you or the city and any complaints they get off their website or onsite or that. So maybe we should just pull that, say, make, send them, hey, we're checking in, are you tracking that? Do you have any, if you have any, would you send those, would you send copies to us so we could review those? Just to see if they're, they understand that we're checking and we're following up on that condition.
Certainly. No, we can do that.
Yeah. I understand last Saturday was just very, very crowded. Like people were, my wife said on social media, she said, people are complaining, they're stuck in the parking lot for like 20 minutes, they can't get out. It's so crowded. Like, don't come here, you won't be able to get out, type of thing, so.
Okay. Any other commissioner comments?
I have a question.
Sure.
Driving by North Beach and looking at the old theater, the old movie house.
The Miramar?
Yeah, when's it going to start back up? Because that wood is getting pretty dried out and starting to look kind of raunchy.
Yes, I can provide an update on that property. Staff has the same concerns about the preservation and maintenance of that site because the work has slowed there. So staff had a joint call with the property owners and a new contractor that they have selected. And we are doing a site visit. We have that tentatively scheduled for this Friday afternoon with a couple of things in mind there. One, that some of the materials of that new construction area of the food hall may no longer be able to be used and might need to be replaced. So to document those items as well as, number two, protect in place some of the materials that are exposed, give them specific guidelines. And again, this will be with our building official. That's not my area of specific expertise, so Jack Holden will be participating in that site visit. And then finally, number three, just general site cleanliness and security. So we'll be addressing those three things with the property owner and more specifically with their designated contractor who does have a local office in San Clemente.
Good deal.
Any other comments?
Chair, yeah, I do have just a couple of quick things. This Monday, there is a mandatory AB 1234 training and I've, we've heard from most of you on that, but if you all could respond as to your availability, that will be important for the clerk to, to make sure that that can proceed as planned. And then.
Ray, can I respond to that?
And that's here, right?
It is here. It's in this room, Monday at 3:00 PM.
Can I just say, I'm a really ethical guy.
City attorney, do you have a comment on?
Yeah, I just wanted to let you know, I will be giving that training, so it'll be riveting and fun-filled and there will be a game. So it'll be far better than having to do it online, I promise.
Will there be food? Will there be a test? Will there be snacks?
It's two hours, okay? Three, starts at?
Two.
Starts at three, correct.
Two hours.
Two hours starts at three. All right, I am going to be.
Okay, great, thank you. I'll relay that information. And then finally, we did register, and there was an email about this, for the state's historic preservation training. There's a conference that occurs once a year. We didn't sign up for an in-person attendance this year. It's up in San Francisco, but we did register for the online courses. So if you are interested in participating in any of those, the specific courses are referenced in that email, please reach out to Tamara, who has copied on that email and we'll make sure that we reserve a conference room so that you can view any of those courses that you're interested in. And that's all that I have today. Thank you.
Can we get CEUs for that?
Continuing education.
I do believe that there are continuing education credits if you, you know, need those through APA or others.
All right.
Okay, thank you. I'm, we need a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I will move we adjourn to the next regular meeting of the planning commission to be held on Wednesday, May 5th, 2023, 6:00 PM, here at the San Clemente City Hall, Council Chambers, located at 910 Cali-Negoro, second floor here in San Clemente.
It'll be May the 3rd?
That's a Wednesday. Wednesday, May 5th? That's what it says here. Not by the 2023 calendar I'm looking at. May the 3rd is a Wednesday. Yeah, you're right.
Yeah, you're right.
Okay, I will amend my motion to be May the 3rd, 2023.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Meeting is adjourned.